Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Luesbranz, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Luesbranz.
Here.
Treasurer Corstanz.
Yeah.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Clerk Slater, here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Their approval for tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee, or excuse me, treasurer Corstanz to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, presentations. We are pleased to have State Representative Phil Skaggs with us here tonight to provide us with an legislative update. Representative Skaggs is responsible for securing the $3.5 million in state funding, which will cover the entire project of the pedestrian bridge over the highway on Burden Street. It's expected. We very much appreciate that. So, welcome, and the floor is yours.
That's where I come up to.
See that tiny microphone?
Oh, great. Hi, everyone. As the supervisor said, I'm Phil Skaggs. I'm the state representative for District 80, which includes all of Cascade Township. I was elected just last year, so I'm in the first year of my term. Before that, I was involved, like you are now, in local government. I was a county commissioner for six years, and before that was East Grand Rapids City Commissioner. Proud now to represent the communities of House District 80, which includes Kentwood, East Grand Rapids, those are the two cities, and then the entirety of Cascade Township and two precincts each in Grand Rapids Township and the city of Grand Rapids. So it is essentially the southeast quadrant of the greater Grand Rapids metro area. Just wanted to come by today, and I think I'll hopefully, with the supervisor's indulgence, come before you on a biannual basis. So come once in the summer after the budget is all set to talk a little bit about that, and then come at the end of the year to talk a little bit about some of the legislative achievements, and we'll try to focus in on those that are specific to Cascade Township, to townships, to the Kent County region. So today, I wanted to talk a little bit about both of those things, and that is to discuss some of the wins that we had in the budget process. In July, we passed an $82 billion budget. A lot of that was a one-time spending because of the federal funds that came down during the pandemic and recovery attempts to spend that money, which otherwise we would have had to send back to Washington, DC. So we had lots of wins for West Michigan and for Cascade in the greater Grand Rapids area. Significant amount of funding for the zoo, $14 million, for river restoration, for the public museum, for the Special Olympics new facility, which will do wonders, I think. It's not just for training for Special Olympians, but really does great work for both children and adults with special needs. And in addition, funding for a Grand Rapids Fire Training Center, which will be open and available for all regional fire departments to utilize, to make sure that they're trained up to standards and ready to serve and protect the people of their communities. We, as part of the budget, we saw a 5% increase in revenue sharing. So that money is coming down to you now. That's for all cities, townships, and villages. As in addition to a 2% increase in funding, which is targeted towards public safety. As the supervisor mentioned, we were able to bring together $3.5 million for the urban suburban recreational pathway bridge. So we were very excited about that. That was really the fruits of a meeting that I had with the supervisor and the previous township manager to really get to know each other and to look at what were the projects that might be available for some funding. So we were able to do that between the election and being sworn in so that we could hit the ground running, and I'm pleased to be successful with that and am here to help make sure that that money gets through there and you guys are able to fulfill your plans for that project. We are coming up on a new budget cycle. We're currently at what the powers that be like to call an in-district work period, which is part of the reason why I can be here tonight and we're not burning the midnight oil in Lansing, as we have done frequently over the last 11 months. But we, once we get back into session in January, we'll begin the budget talks. I am on the, a member of the Appropriations Committee, Chair of the Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Committee, but also on transportation, Health and Human Services, school aids, so K through 12 funding, and higher education funding. So that's, I think we figured it out, is 83% of Michigan's budget. We will again have the opportunity for local enhancement grants, like the bridge project. So we'll be getting in touch and talking soon. I know we have a meeting on the agenda to discuss what other projects we might be able to put in for. There's going to be significantly less money this time around, so I can't make any guarantees that we'll be able to bring some of our taxpayer dollars back to us here in District 80, but I will do everything possible to try to do that. Just a couple other places that I wanted to highlight was a great focus that we put on education. So be bringing this presentation, obviously, to the Forest Hills School District, as I have done to the other two major school districts in our community. That was a $21.5 billion budget, which brought about the highest per pupil funding in the history of the state of Michigan. An additional over $450 additional per pupil to bring us up to $9,608. That was a $9 million increase for Forest Hills Schools. We're funding special education at 100% for the first time in the history of Michigan. We're working on dealing with some of the teacher supply issues that we're having by making sure that when student teachers are in the classroom, that they're being paid, because normally they're not paid for that work and they're paying tuition. It makes it sort of a difficult thing to go into. And then we have a new program underway to help teachers that stay in the state of Michigan and teach in the state of Michigan for four and five years to be able to have some of their tuition reimbursed to them. So again, trying to keep our talent here in the state of Michigan, give them the opportunity to get employment, grow roots in our communities, and then stay here and help our children out. In addition, sorry, clumsily turn the page. In addition, we have mental health and school safety grants. Now I'll skip around on some of the other issues. We can have one-on-one meetings on some of that, but just a few things that I'm personally working on. I was out today in the field doing a septic inspection. I shouldn't say doing one, observing a trained professional do a septic inspection for a house. Michigan is the only state in the Union that does not have statewide septic code that includes a periodic or some level of inspections to make sure that tanks and fields are not failing and that septic systems are properly hooked up, because the alternative to that is a great deal of pollution that gets into the groundwater and then makes its way to creeks and streams and rivers and lakes. And we want to make sure that we join every other state in the Union in having a reasonable science-based system that makes sure that we are preventing pollution within our communities. So I'm hard at work at that. In addition, another one of my favorite bills is on increasing the penalties for child labor exploitation. There was an article in the New York Times back at the beginning of the year that demonstrated that some of this exploitation of child labor, that is, working too long of hours, working during school time, working in dangerous conditions, working too late at night, were happening in our community next door in Kentwood. In addition, we had an individual who was in Ionia, young 17-year-old lost his hand in a meat grinder. The only penalty that the Attorney General was able to achieve in that case was a $1,413 or thereabouts, but about $1,500 fine for a teenager to lose their hand. So we've got to have a proper balance here, that the punishment fits the crime. I'm also working again on expanding that teacher tuition reimbursement program to support students who stay in Michigan, right? This is, I think, one of the governor's and the legislature's primary initiatives moving forward to grow our talent. That's why we did all this funding in K through 12 education. That's why we just funded for the first time the Achievement Scholarships. Make sure that your juniors and seniors that you know in your community are filling out those horrible but necessary FAFSA forms for aid for both two-year and four-year colleges, as well as skilled trades training. That will make them eligible for the new state Achievement Scholarships, which is about 5,500 every year for four years for students. So if the average student debt is $35,000, this will take it down by an upfront grant of $22,000, which I think is a wonderful program. What I'm working on is the bookend to that. So we've increased college affordability and accessibility, but let's make sure that that talent stays here in Michigan. So you stay here in Michigan, just like the teachers, and we'll begin to support you at a 50% payback for that. So we're hoping, and one of the things that I hear as I talk to residents is, I want my children to stay in Michigan. I want my grandchildren to be able to stay in Michigan, and I think that's an initiative that I hope will work. So I just want to introduce my Chief of Staff and Legislative Director, Tom Stevenson, is here with us in the audience. I think he was snapping some pictures earlier. Tom and Emily are my team, and if you ever need to get ahold of me, I have some business cards that I'll leave up here, but it's pretty easy to get ahold of me, I think, if you Google me, you'll just find. And I just want you to know that I am here to serve this community and to be a resource for you and township government. So with that, you know, I just want to thank you for the time, and I will get in touch with all of you soon if I haven't already, and have a great meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Article four, presentations. Nope, sorry, Article five, public comments on tonight's business. Now is the time to speak on any items that are on tonight's agenda. Tonight's items include a pathway dedication to lifelong resident Alan Cox, Wycliffe Park Playground Equipment, the pavilion at French Park, hazmat expenses, changes in our voting precincts, next year's township meeting schedule, and also appointments to different township committees and commissions for 2024. Anyone wishing to speak on those items? Now is the time. Anyone wishing to speak on something else will have an opportunity after the board has conducted tonight's business. With that, please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for record-keeping. Anyone virtually? All right, Article.
Virtually, just a second. Go ahead, Scott.
Hi there, Scott Van Solkma. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I would like to say I want to voice my support regarding the pathway dedication for Alan Cox. I've known the family for years. They're great family friends of my wife and her family, and it was a tragic loss that Alan lost his life back in September. Unfortunately, he has not received any justice yet in the criminal justice system. I don't know what the holdup is with that, but helping nameless and honor and recognition of him and the family and his contributions for the Cascade area. I know he left a brief time to go to college, but he is a lifelong resident here. So anything that we can do to help keep his name alive would be very beneficial, I think, for all residents and definitely for his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Article six, approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Please supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions. Discussion or emotion?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the invoices to be paid on 12/14 of this year. Do we do it as a whole, once or item by item?
We can do it all at once, as long as there's no.
And approval of the 2023 budget amendments, which leafly account for every penny spent.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Corstanz, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, we will now turn to Article nine, new business. First, item 096, 2023. This is a resolution to dedicate pathway, a portion of our pathway on Thornapple River Drive in memory of Mr. Alan Cox. As Mr. Van Solkma mentioned, Mr. Cox, a lifelong resident of Cascade Township, was driving on Thornapple River Drive one evening in September when he was hit head-on by a drunk driver very close to Thornapple River Drive and killed. With that, his friends have generous and family have generously offered and then fully financially supported, memorializing a portion of that pathway as well as a bench. So with that, and before board comments, I will read the proposed resolution. Resolution to dedicate a segment of Cascade Township's pathway in memory of Alan Cox. Whereas Alan Cox was a cherished member of our community, whose laughter and spirit were as deeply rooted in Cascade Township as the trees that line our streets. A lifelong resident with only a brief departure for college, Alan's heart always remained tied to the community he called home. Whereas Alan's role as a community connector cannot be overstated, he brought together diverse groups from Forest Hills Central High School classmates to local card players and app developers. Whereas Alan's involvement extended beyond social gatherings, he was deeply committed to enriching the lives of those around him. His volunteer work at the Grand Rapids Children's Museum and his pro bono programming for youth suicide prevention highlighted his altruistic spirit and his commitment to making a difference. Whereas Alan's infectious laughter and childlike joy were a beacon of happiness, touching the lives of those around him, from the youngest children to the oldest friends. Alan's life was a beautiful reflection for his love of Cascade Township and its people. He embodied the very essence of community spirit, always engaging, forever caring, and endlessly giving. As we dedicate this section of the bike path in his memory, we celebrate not only Alan's profound impact on our lives, but also his enduring legacy as a beloved son of Cascade Township. This dedicated pathway and bench will serve as a reminder of the joy and unity he brought to our lives, inspiring us to cherish our community and each other, just as Alan did every day of his remarkable life. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that a segment of Cascade Charter Township's pathway system along Thornapple River Drive be dedicated in memory of Alan Cox. Before we have board comment, I just would like to invite the Cox family and also his friends to stand up and be recognized, and we also would like to thank his friends and family for the financial support that covered 100% of the plaque and the bench. Thank you. Any board discussion or motion?
I have a question. Do you know yet which section?
I'm trying to pull that up as we speak. I did not want to disturb.
Near the island house, I believe?
It is on Thornapple, where the accident occurred, to Camelback Bridge. It's a little over a mile segment on the Larry Way Loop.
Okay, thank you.
We actually have a map of that location. I just think we can, but we can send that to you.
I pulled it up right, I'm sorry, I'm pulling it up right now so that you can see it. And there will be a public announcement as well. There will be, thank you. There will be notices that will go out of this, and then in the spring, we will be doing a dedication, and again, hopefully the family and friends can join us at that time as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution dedicating that portion of pathway in honor in memory of Alan Cox.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the proposed resolution. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstanz.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater.
Yes.
Supervisor Luesbranz.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you for being here this evening, and hopefully we will see you once again in the spring when we install the plaque and also the bench. It's the second bench in the township that will be in his memory.
Thank you. And I wanted to state only the second person that was, has been honored with this prestigious dedication of the pathway, so.
Item 097, 2023, contract for playground construction at Wycliffe Park. Director Mannion, thank you.
Yes, as you know, and a few months ago, you approved a budget of $200,000 to help develop Wycliffe Park. This is a park that is, my understanding, again, a lot of this was discussed before I was with the township. This is a pathway park that is meant to be a destination so that people can walk the path, and even though it is a small park, it's in the heart of the township. And being able to have amenities there that can be enjoyed by those that are using the pathway system is really important. But at the same time, another main goal of this was to keep it very natural and very low cost, but also very almost passive in its recreation. And for that reason, you may remember, the original design was just under $400,000, and so we took a lot of the features, the amenities, out, and we are doing them in-house, and that helped bring the cost down significantly, things like the trail, what we're doing the parking lot ourselves, the split rail fence for safety. But there were a couple of things that we could not do in-house, and mostly was the commercial playground, because we need to be able to have this as something that is safe and certified and professional. It's not something we can just do ourselves. We, overwhelmingly clear from the most recent surveys, that people wanted a natural playground, not a regular playground, and so we tried to get the leading person, organization, to help us, which would have been at lower cost, the Outdoor Discovery Center out of Holland. But unfortunately, this is such a popular style of playground right now that they are busy all the way into 2025, and we know that we really want to see this developed, our constituents really want to see this park developed. So that just, our Parks Committee decided to do the next best thing and find one of the, the only other company that makes these type of structures. And unfortunately, it is out of Europe, but they have local businesses here that are, that we were able to work with. The cost is more than I had hoped in what was originally budgeted. I'll be honest about that. But again, comparatively, I did look up Cascade Rec Park back in 2016, that playground was $300,000. So, and that was in those dollars back then. So we're a third of the price of probably what we would play if we were playing for a plastic playground and, you know, more of what you typically see in a playground. It does come with a 10-year warranty, and even after the first year, they come back and they make sure that everything is working correctly, because a lot of people have concerns about it being made out of wood. This is a very special wood. It's black locust, and so it really resists deterioration, but we will also maintain them very well to make sure that they get the longest lifespan that we can. One thing that was really important as a destination park is that we had something for both young children and older children. So that was one thing that they, the designer came up with pretty quickly, is the standards are different between those two age groups, so we needed to have two separate playgrounds. If you look here, you can see this is not an exact, exactly to scale, but pretty close to the exact scale of what the playground will be. The rectangle there, I guess it's a parallelogram, actually is just the overall area, because the older playground needs to have fall zones, a very large safety fall zone. So that whole rectangle will be, have engineered wood chips that allow them, that are about a foot deep, that allow them to fall safely. So that, but we are using engineered wood chips so that it'll blend nicely and be natural. That's why we're not using rubber chips that you might see at other playgrounds. And we're also making sure that we're not using plastic around the edge. It'll actually, we'll dig a hole and put it in there, so it blends seamlessly with the environment. So what you're seeing there, that parallelogram is larger than maybe what you expect, but that's because, again, you have a large fall zone there, a safety. There's only two structures in there. And then the three-to-five-year-old, that one was, again, we could have done a lot of different things there, but we didn't want to take out trees. And so for that reason, you can see the footprint of this is much smaller. The only fall zone is of one structure, and then the rest is just pathways with that engineered wood to be able to make this fully accessible for students that are, children that are in wheelchairs or have disabilities. To show you what it looks like today, this is the area that we selected for the older, the three, the five-to-12-year-old or 13-year-old, because if you look, it's already open. So we only have to take out one large tree and a few saplings, so minimal disturbance to this area. And again, these structures are wood and black rope, so they're meant to blend in with the environment. So two things that were really important was a minimal impact on the environment, but also minimal impact aesthetically. We don't want this big red and blue play structure in the middle of the woods. These are very natural and hopefully will blend in. You can notice even the color, we're not going to stain them, we're using the natural colors. And then this is, again, the three-to-five-year-old area. We will not have to take out a single tree to be able to put this in. So you can see there's a spot just big enough to put the little gnome house is what I'm going to call it. And then we chose three different structures. This was the most expensive part, but we did this again because we wanted to not have to put money into wood chips. We wanted to put the money into actual play structures. We will supplement this with other things, like little tables and some other things that our crew can make, or if we find a volunteer who's a craftsman, maybe they could make those, but the structures themselves, the three, you know, core structures, need to be safe for children and have to be certified through the playgrounds. So that's the reason why these three are like that. Yes, let me make sure I have, so again, there, it's, the goal is to be fully accessible, and one last thing I want to mention, we, if you remember back when we approved this, one of the cost savings. one of the cost savings was to not do a plumbed bathroom. And so we are doing a vault restroom, which may seem a little different and odd. But again, we want to, one, make the structures, spend the money where the fun is, right, in the playground, not in the bathroom. So the bathroom is mostly going to be for emergencies or passerby's. We'll also keep it very clean. But the Parks Committee actually voted to make sure that we did the vault because then it will be open all year long for people to be able to use these playgrounds all year long, even right now when there's no stove, they could be out there having fun. And there's a restroom facility ready for them to use. Whereas if we had plumbing, we would have to either close it this time of year like we do at Tassel and many other places, or we'd have to heat it. And last but not least, again, the price tag is a little hefty, so there we could remove any of these items. But I I do feel that, one, the three structures are good because they balance. It makes it actually look like a little village. Also, this long ropes course is actually the most popular of all of the items that this company sells. And it's also the most cost effective. You you get the most bang for your buck is what he keeps saying on that one. Our Parks Committee member Mike Reese, who is a does this for a profession. He is a playground developer. He said the the bigger one, which I did actually not, originally, we did not talked about, is his favorite. He says when he puts this into a playground, it is by far the most used. And that's the one that has the climbing wall there and the spider web. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. I was just curious what the ropes were made out of on that per core.
Oh, that's a great question. I do not know. And I don't know if it's in there.
I don't know what ropes are made out of in general.
I mean, you could have it as natural or synthetic. I'm assuming synthetic, but I could be wrong. Can I get back with you on that?
Stabilize PA with inner steel cable reinforcement.
There you go. I wish I knew what that meant.
Yeah.
Synthetic.
Answer my question.
Synthetic, thank you.
A flower child.
I'm still.
First of all, I'd like to once again commend you on keeping costs low and mobilizing volunteers throughout the township. And you are absolutely correct that this is an important part of our residents that live up on that side of the river. They wanted this. They wanted a trailhead. And you've maintained a design that is going to be safe because we also have a new inspector that's certified in playground equipment, correct? Will be.
Will be.
Will be.
The class was full. Very soon. We take them back.
The plan is there. That's great. And if there's anything else that comes up, do not hesitate to come back to this township board with that information. And I believe we have an agreement for parking up there with Old Church. So those people that need to park up there instead of walking there have got a facility to to do so.
And we we I've already spoken with our Buildings and Grounds crew and Mike Reese, who helped with the development and really understands the the requirements, especially the ADA requirements of a parking. And we are fully capable of doing it all in-house.
And this was all forecasted to be in the budget and it's well within the budget limits.
Yes.
So there's no a hidden cost or nutshell game that's going to be played.
No.
Okay. With that, I would like to make a motion.
Wait a second.
Okay. Melanie, I the person on the Parks Committee that installs these, I I when I got this picture that's up there, but the one with the ropes.
Yes.
It looks like a lot of stuff that kids could get caught in. Is that safe? That kind of.
All of these have been are very are certified. So these are all certified playground commitment and would pass any playground inspection. Actually, it's a pretty crazy. Some of the things that they showed us that were possible, they have, I can't remember how high it was. I think it was seven stories. It was something ridiculous that they had is a rope triangle and it was a web. And and they designed them in a very, it looks dangerous and it gives you the sense of being dangerous, but it's extremely safe due to the engineering and the way they're designed.
It just seems like a five to what 12 this part.
Yes.
Climbing on that rope had would have a lot of opportunity to slip in as opposed to something more solid. I'm not a playground person.
These are incredibly popular right now, incredibly popular. It's called the ninja playground.
I understand, Jim, to your concern that the most dangerous and the most accident and injury causing playground equipment are the typical monkey bars. And that was that was from the Safety Council. So looking at ropes, it's a little bit different than the safety bars. But I'm glad to see that there's no monkey bars up there.
No monkey bars.
That we all grew up on and lived.
Right.
And merry-go-round. I miss merry-go-rounds.
I also want to say, Melanie, I appreciate, you know, when I first looked at this, as I told you, I was a little disturbed by all those bright colors in the packet. So I appreciate very much that you have tried to keep the colors as close to nature as possible and to blend in with the existing trees. I think it'd be really nice. And I think it'll be a very popular place.
I hope so because it is very different than normal playgrounds. That is the exciting part. It is a special niche that we will have.
Is it possible, right now it's funded by the township, but if any residents were interested in maybe making a donation on behalf of a someone else or in memory of someone to take private donations and then dedicate portions of?
Absolutely.
Or add on even.
Yep, yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the playground construction at White Cliff Park that the township presidents have been waiting for.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer to approve the proposed contract for playground construction at White Cliff Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item zero nine eight, 2023. Contractor for the pavilion to be constructed at Friendship Park, which is right in front of the library. Director Mannion, can you walk us through that one too?
Wes.
Absolutely. And Wes Landon from Native Edge is also going to join me. To but we also have with us tonight our contractor Ben from Harder and Warner, who's actually, if you've seen the construction happening, they have made amazing strides in the last month since you all passed that contract. And then we have our architect back there, Neil, and he is the one who actually designed this beautiful structure. So I just want to give again a history. You all know I inherited this. But I'm extremely excited about. I'm going to go back to what I said with White Cliff. I will confess, I'm nervous about, and Wes knows, I'm nervous about the the quote, the bids that came in because they're well over budget. And I know trustee Shipley does not like going over budget. So I I I was concerned, but I want to walk you through the process of how this happened and then why I actually feel confident and comfortable bringing it for you today. First of all, you may remember the the history of this. This is the last part of Friendship Park to approve because of the fact that it was the most difficult. Everything else people felt comfortable with, but the pavilion has been a struggle since the beginning. And I think that's because, and again, I have not been there, we all recognize this is going to be an icon of Cascade. This is what's going, people are going to think of when they think of Cascade. They'll think of the dam. They will think of our new pedestrian bridge. But this also will be something that will represent who we are. And what we originally were looking at was a prefabricated pavilion that was made out of wood. It was attractive, very attractive. And it fit within that $300,000 that Mr. Landon put into the original budget. It was great, except it was prefabbed. It was cookie cutter. It was not unique. It did not match the library and it had a lot of downfall. And so you I'm pretty sure unanimously, people decided that we needed to hire a contract design, an architect, design forum to find something that would really represent us as a township. And that is the beautiful structure that Neil has come up with. Now, having said that, because of that, the original 300,000, which was for a prefab wood structure has increased. Those bids came in very high, as you can see, $430,000. And that is again, because we're now working with metal. We're also, we added brick to match the library and it's custom built. So all of those things really elevated that that price tag. But again, I think the end goal of creating something that's unique and iconic is what Neil has created here. There is one last piece that, again, no surprises. No nutshell game. You'll notice on the design, it's green on the top. Because this is the one contribution that I did make to this wonderful project is a green roof. So again, part of this project is to have all these wonderful native plants and the wildlife and the butterflies and the birds that come with that. And we wanted the structure with the brick to match the library, but we also want it to blend in with the rest of this new park, which is all these native wildflowers. And so for that reason, we are going to put a garden on top of the structure. And these are beautiful native plants that will be put up there. And it does add an extra $100,000. However, I am already seeking donations to help cover at least part of that cost. With all that said, even with the extra money and the $100,000, we still will not be using taxpayers' dollars because we have been able to receive that RAP grant, which was for $450,000. So we are still not asking you for more money because we already have the money in hand to cover everything we're presenting, even though it is the pavilion is almost double the budget that we had originally anticipated. Would you like to add anything, Wes?
Good evening. Now, I don't, I think Melanie captured it pretty well. Really, with everything aside from the pavilion, we've been on budget. And and like Melanie said, it was just that was one of the difficult things during the process to determine. I I know that working with Neil, we tried to develop something we thought was going to be within that framework. We knew we had the RAP grant during this process. So with some of these decisions that we made, we it's kind of like how this project evolved from being a very, very small project to what it has become now. We've sort of said, well, we want to make sure we're putting our best foot forward and allowing the township to have this iconic feature, this iconic building that's going to be visible from 28th Street that's unlike anything anywhere around or, you know, really across the country. It's a completely unique structure. So we've had that as our kind of guiding principle in this whole effort while keeping an eye on the budget and trying to come in there as close as possible. So I also am very excited about it and and glad that we that Melanie was able to secure that RAP grant right away so that we we do have that as a, you know, as as a way to not use any additional funding and and hopefully not need to go back to the drawing board. So.
Is it fair to say that the it's hard? Is that like a CAD drawing? However, the it has more of a spaceship or ice cream sandwich look to it, but the doesn't seem to capture the custom masonry?
So that rendering is is slightly outdated because all of the gray on the raised planters that you see, that's all going to be the masonry, the brick that's going to match the library. So sorry. So that's all going to be pretty much brick. It's all it's all brick except for the seat wall caps, which are that stone cap. Other than that, it's all brick. So this rendering is just a little bit, it was more kind of during the process.
One question. Go ahead. Sorry. Just because we're looking at the contractor to build this, have you worked with the visor builders in the past? I'm just wondering between the three.
Yes, design forum, they have worked with visor in the past, and I believe Harder and Warner has as well. So they're both familiar with visor and they did come in 61 and a half thousand below. So and both other bids were pretty close.
They're less expensive, but I just want to make sure that we're that somebody's worked with them in the past and that we're getting quality work as well.
Yes, they have. And they also followed up post-bid to make sure that we we checked on a few items that we just wanted to make sure were lined up properly with the different things we expected to see and that all checked out.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just have a question. Are you just going to get up there then with the ladder every now and then to water it or what's the deal? It rains.
Yeah, well, that
Good thing.
That'll help. There is going to be irrigation in the green as well to keep that looking, you know, vibrant all the time. There's actually going to be paths on tap as on top as well for access for, you know, weeding that might need to happen from time to time and and general maintenance.
Are you going to have like plants of different varying heights?
Yep. So we're going to use all native plants and that's becoming, we, the green roof medium that we selected was deep enough to be able to support native plants. So not just the typical of, you know, three to four inch sedum that you might see in some green roof. So this, the green roof has an angle to it and it's angled higher out facing the field to the north so that, you know, for the event kind of side of things. But so you'll be able to really see the green roof from the back anyway because it's angled, but we'll have varying plant heights on top, anywhere from a foot to maybe, you know, flowers that come up maybe two and a half, three feet. So it's going to be very visually interesting.
Because I've only seen the three to four inch.
Yeah.
Well, that's the part why we will be very unique.
Yeah.
Having said that, you know, when I brought it to them, I had known one person that used natives because most people do not use natives. But since then, they have reached out and John Balzoo has a very successful green roof using natives. So if you want to see what it looks like, you can go to John Balzoo. Or, you know, we have a picture of that to be able to show it to you.
Is the back part that's a little bit lower? Is that the part that's closest to the library?
Yes.
And higher part looking out on 28th Street?
Yes. And the idea behind that was that the the planters there, you can see sort of frame the space. So when you're inside it, because it's a, it's a a large pavilion feature. So but the planters help to kind of bring that scale down inside, make you feel really cozy for the day-to-day use. And then the the north side that is angled up higher, that the planters there open and that space can be used as a stage space, you know, or for a presenter or, you know, anything like that, but kind of be more event space and with it being very passive for day-to-day use as well.
And then the the it looks kind of sterile with like it was poured concrete, but that's pavers, right?
The Correct. Yes. There's going to be concrete coming up until you see these, you know, the circular portion of it. And then there's a mix of pavers and concrete in there. Pavers help to accent the space a little bit and and liven that up versus it being just a a large expanse of concrete.
We will be creating renderings soon that will kind of help visualize it a little bit more. We just, for time reasons, we just are trying to kind of keep it on schedule and on track. And so that's a little bit behind.
I'd really like to see a picture of that.
Yeah. And one other thing I wanted to mention is that lighting is very important for this too, especially, you know, at night, obviously, when you need lighting, but the to be viewed from 28th Street and passersby. It's going, the lighting is going to really accent this feature and and it's it's going to be really incredible and an accent and an anchor for the whole park. So.
Really appreciate up to date. You've been on time, ahead of time and on budget. So it's nice to know ahead of time rather than get surprises later.
I just have to give a big kudos to Wes because the visor actually came in and hoped to have this done in May. And our goal was to have the whole project done in June, and we thought the delay would be the pavilion because we're so far behind on that. And the fact that he's kept this going and has not, you know, skipped a beat is the reason why I think we're going to be on time, if not before.
Hi, I'm still here.
No more comments. Is there a motion?
First of all, Melanie, and I'd like to thank the friends of library.
Yes.
Actually kickstarting this and getting it going with their generous fundraising. Now, I see that the exterior concrete concrete flatwork is going to be by somebody else. And so this is for the pavilion minus the flatwork. Topsoil landscaping and irrigation is going to be by somebody else. Drinking phone's by somebody else. And let me see, we're going to spend another roughly $100,000 to put dirt and plants on top at at next year, uh, next year's budget?
Yes, but again, I'm hoping to get donations. We've already have very positive feedback from a couple of organizations to provide some donations and the RAP grant would be, it'd still be well within the RAP grant.
Okay, great.
And all the items that you mentioned are going to be in Harder and Warner's scope of work. So those things that are still to be determined, sure, were just because they were associated with the pavilion itself. And all of that is covered, we estimate to be covered fully within the original budget we had.
Which you already approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of that's already been.
And just to remind you, Melanie. And um, just to remind you, Melanie, because I heard you use the word hope. I worked for a brigade commander that told his staff repeatedly, hope is not a method. Okay? And um, also uh, Visser Brothers are proposing to to uh, do this. And I believe that they also presented the proposal for rezoning by their port, didn't they?
I'm looking at it, same name, I think it's same last name, different logo. There must be a lot of Visser's.
I don't know. Couldn't tell you.
My Google search made it seem like they're different, but.
Yeah.
I will say we will be taking out a construction bond to ensure that the work is performed as we have required. Are requiring.
Excellent. Nice job.
This is a
Just to clarify, we won't be taking out the bond. We'll be requiring the bond with the contractor.
Correct. With those my questions answered to my satisfaction, I make a motion to go ahead and approve this. Um, contractor for the pavilion construction at Friendship Park.
I support. And I'd just like to add that, you know, I I agree with with Grace and and everybody who asked about some of the questions about the aesthetics of it. The renderings are usually, I call them the Disney drawings. They're better than what you get. I think in this case, we're going to actually get something that's better than this drawing. Unfortunately, I would say next time.
Hundred percent.
Put your best foot forward.
Yeah.
Because your explanations were really good. I just wanted to add that, you know, the the library is our number one asset, the number one visited asset in Cascade. So this is going to be around for decades. And we didn't cheap out in the fire department because one, we wanted the best, we wanted something that was going to last for a long time, we wanted the best design. So we didn't go just to get the cheapest thing. We wanted to get something that's going to reflect Cascade. And I think, you know, your creativity here, just like with the White Cliff Park, I like the creativity in that i- is is really exceptional. And and I think it's going to be more as you described it than what we see in this picture. So again, that's why I support it.
Yeah, and the renderings, we're going to have um, blown up and kind of posted outside of where the guys are working right now too. So people visiting the library can get excited about it and really see what the park is going to look like and just have a better understanding versus looking at the plan, which as you mentioned, can be kind of hard for people to.
Well, it might be nice to have it in the library as well.
Yeah.
People see it.
Yeah.
Get excited about it.
Yep.
We'll have it online also.
Yeah, great idea.
Um, while we have you here, for any residents who are wondering why a few tree, more trees may have come down than what were initially expected, do you want to?
I will take that one.
Take that hit?
I will. Um, I'm going to take the heat on that one if there is any heat. Wes actually contacted me because Harder and Warner were going in and starting to remove the trees. And they had initially planned on only taking a few trees out. And but they asked me because I had said when we were out there that I had hoped that they would take all of the black locusts. Because black locust is an invasive species. And one of the characteristics with black locust is not only is it invasive, but if you damage black locust, it sends up clones. And so you go from one to hundreds or thousands. And my fear was, one, um, doing all that construction that we're going to have a lot of clones. With him, um, with Native Edge taking care of the maintenance for the next couple of years, I wanted him to be dealing with the clones and not us with our um, volunteers and such. But also, more importantly, we would eventually have to take those out. And we really do not have the resources to be taking out large trees in a very public area. Why not do that? It it was kind of like ripping the Band-Aid off. They'd eventually have to come out. We just did it now. But Harder and Warner does have some native trees that we'll be able to put in to kind of supplement it a little bit so that it doesn't look so harsh. That.
Yeah, oh, I just really quick, if you don't mind, I just wanted to say too that um, that's one of the great things about working with Harder and Warner and why I'm glad we hired them is because they said, hey, do you want us to just take these out? Said, yeah, sure. And they just did it. So, you know, I mean
Crazy?
Because it was for the benefit of the project. They knew that it'd be the right thing to do. And now even with all that extra space, there's more room in the woodland area for more activity zones and and it's going to be easier to take that next step more quickly versus needing to take trees down or kill trees down the line. So um, and we kept everything good, everything good stayed and everything bad went, so.
Good. Thank you for that clarification.
One last comment of irony. It's interesting that we're taking out black locusts because they're invasive. But guess what the timbers are made out of of your proposed park over on White Cliff?
That is exactly. And in fact, you know, I like to be creative. I'm um, I am actually hoping to sell our black locust from White Cliff to Outdoor Discovery Center to try to, because again, they're doing so many of these throughout West Michigan and they're running out of black locusts. I know a place that has a few. Three hundred.
Well, and thank you too for Ben and Neil, Harder and Warner, the designer, Wes. You guys have all really owned this project and you can tell you really care about it, Melanie, you too. So we really appreciate it. We can tell that you're not just checking the boxes. You really want it to be something special that you're proud of.
Thanks.
Thank you. So that was a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the contractor visor construction for the pavilion construction at Friendship Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item zero nine nine twenty twenty three, the proposed hazmat trailer replacement. Manager Smith, do you want to speak on this one or go right to chief majors?
Fire chief is here too. Um, it's pretty cut and dry, as it says in the executive summary in the uh, board action item. This is a cooperative between Cascade, Gaines and Kentwood Fire Department. And this is to replace some machinery that, some equipment that they have. If the chief has more to add.
Talk about the millage, talk about
I'd love to talk about it. Um, yes, we belong to the TRICOM hazmat team. It's a way for us to share resources and capability and then mitigate those uh, low frequency, high risk uh, events like a, like a serious hazmat incident. Most of our hazmat incidents are small. We can clean them up uh, in hours. Uh, this is a way for us to just kind of share that burden with with three other communities. So City of Kentwood and Gaines Township and Cascade bonded together to create the TRICOM hazmat team. We all contribute two thousand dollars a year towards a fund to uh, basically replace equipment that uh, is either outdated or broken or just needs replacing. So this is, this would fall into that category as something that would be appropriate for that. Uh, right now, we've got a twenty year old thirty six foot goose neck trailer that can only be taken to a scene via the one special vehicle of the city of Kentwood. So it's not very convenient. As as our operations get more efficient and our equipment gets smaller, we just don't need a thirty six foot goose neck trailer. It's in great condition, so we're we're looking to sell it and basically just trade it in for a smaller, more efficient trailer. So having said that, uh, the thirty six foot trailer would be sold at auction. We would purchase a twenty two foot flat front trailer, um, just a smaller one. And uh, I believe low bid came in at twelve thousand seven hundred ninety. And then we're looking at another two thousand dollars not to exceed for upfitting, basically to sticker it and and put your shelves in, uh, stuff like that. Right now, our hazmat fund is healthy. It's at forty three thousand five hundred and twenty seven. We're looking for approval for that twelve thousand seven ninety plus two thousand to outfit it. And then all proceeds from the thirty six foot goose neck would go back into the TRICOM fund. It's pretty, pretty simple operation, but we're looking for approval.
Got a question.
Yeah.
What exactly goes in that trailer?
So all of our uh, hazmat operations. So we've got air packs and meters and monitors and equipment and a personal protective equipment and just a whole lot of things to mitigate any kind of hazmat emergency. I'll be honest with you, that trailer probably goes out the building two or three times a year. Um, so it's well maintained and it it doesn't really get beat up. It is stored at Kentwood Station Two. Um, where this one will be continued uh, to be stored there. But this will be allow Cascade or Gaines to be able to pick that thing up and take it to a call with any of our vehicles too.
Thank you.
So a little bit more capabilities, a little cheaper.
Couple of comments. Chief, I believe that this was uh, included in your budget request for this this year, wasn't it?
No, this one, this one came up, uh.
Is it brand new?
It it came up brand new.
You got money to do it?
We do. There is forty three forty three thousand five hundred and twenty seven in the TRICOM budget for this. And we're anticipating a net zero uh, cost once the other trailer.
Oh, when the other trailer is uh, brought back and sold. Uh, for the township, for the board's information, uh, hazmat is something that even though we don't do it very often, we need to do it. We've talked about hazardous materials right here in the community. We've talked about heavy equipment going down the road, heavy trucks that aren't necessarily labeled correctly. Um, this has been an ongoing co- cooperation for years with the local departments. And with that, I'm going to jump ahead. Anybody want to make comments? That's fine. But I'm going to make a recommendation to uh, go ahead with the approval of purchasing a new hazmat trailer as a replacement with the condition that any monies from the old one come back into the fund.
Is that part of it already in the proposal? Yes.
Yeah. Support.
Okay, then manager Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the budget impact because this is not, it's, we hold the funds for the TRICOM, but it's actually not township dollars or general fund dollars. Um, we collect from all of the other entities and we just are the fiduciary of those funds and hold them for times like this when expenses need to be made.
Kind of like the building department.
Uh, a little bit different.
Okay, we can talk about that later. But anyways, my motion stands.
And I support it.
Motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the hazmat trailer replacement proposal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, chief.
Be safe.
Item one hundred twenty twenty three, resolution to relocate precinct two, clerk Slater.
Yes, thank you. Um, so in preparation for next year's elections, two precincts need township board relocation. Precinct locations are determined by the township board. Thornapple Covenant Church is no longer willing to offer their facility. And we have had two precincts, uh, two precinct locations in there, so we had to find room for two places, precinct two and precinct nine. So deputy clerk Jagger and I uh, considered other locations. And of course, we're on a tight timeline to get this done before the primary. We determined that Cascade Fellowship Christian Reformed would be best fit for precinct two, as it is the church right next door. And then precinct nine will be relocated to the Wisner Center to serve voters who live farther south. We have a separate, we need a separate uh, resolution for the relocation of each one. And then that will include an expense of a mailing to those voters of three thousand indicating precinct location. And then upon approval by the Board of Trustees, the clerk's office will submit notification to county, state and local parties involved.
Question, Sue, at the uh, polling places, if somebody shows up and they're confused because it's been moved, do we have a way of either providing somebody there with that information?
We do. We, Jennifer now has somebody with, I believe, an iPad and uh, that has the poll book on it. Is that correct?
Going to when a voter goes to the old location?
Correct.
At the old location, there is a poster that's required by the state that gives directions and the address of the new location. And then if you're talking about the polling location that is two precincts, which Sue's mentioning, we will have a person there to direct them to the appropriate precinct that they need to go to.
Very cool, because some of our residents, including myself, are getting rather feeble in mind. And we get confused when there's changes at last minute that we're not aware of.
Well, and we, we try not to do this anymore than we absolutely have to, but legislation is also changing to allow for higher numbers in the precinct, so there may be another big shakeup, who knows? So we have, we have had three precincts in a location before. For example, here, we have, we'll have to have two, we'll have to have someone who directs people even which door to go in once they get in here. So we'll have a person that does only that. Just to, because you don't vote that often, you don't remember.
No, absolutely not.
Where was precinct nine, Sue? I should have asked that when we had our meeting earlier, but where was that?
So precinct nine was in Forest Hills Presbyterian Church for over forty years. And they closed their facility to us because of their daycare situation. So we put precinct nine into Thornapple Covenant Church with precinct two. Now they're both, now we're out of there, so we had to find two new places.
And one will be here and one will be next at fellowship.
At Cascade Fellowship, correct. And they have agreed to host two.
And the first resolution, I'd make a motion to approve the relocation of precinct two.
Shipley supports.
The motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the resolution as stated to relocate precinct two, clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasure Corstun.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, supervisor Les Browns.
Yes, motion carried. Most of our discussion on precinct nine.
I'll make the motion again if nobody else will, they'll relocate precinct nine.
No, I'll support again.
Motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the resolution as stated to relocate precinct nine. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Treasure Corstun.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, and supervisor Les Browns.
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Item one hundred two twenty twenty three, the twenty twenty four township meeting schedule, manager Smith? Not much to say, but if you want to.
Sure. Uh, there's a couple of different changes to bring attention to everything. Um, we do, it's the normal uh, meeting schedule that you're used to. We did make some changes in November and December for next year in regards to the holidays, just like was done in twenty twenty three. And then also the um, PFAS committee and Thornapple River SAD meetings are now not going to be held monthly. They're going to be held every other month. Um, there's, we worked with those committees and there's just not a need to meet on a monthly basis. Um, and if all goes well, those will go to quarterly um, at some point through the year or in twenty twenty five.
If needed, can this be amended?
Yes.
Further discussion, motions?
I move to approve the uh, twenty twenty four meeting schedule.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the twenty twenty four calendar year meeting schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item one zero three twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four appointments to township committees and commissions. As noted in my memorandum, I'm offering the following appointments. First, the Parks Committee. Reappointment of Mike Reese. And then two new appointments. Ryan Bruno and Ken Kaiser. Mr. Bruno and his family have lived in Cascade for over twenty years. He's worked as a corporate purchasing, purchasing manager and an electrical man, a mechanical engineer. He currently serves on the Planning Commission. He loves pickleball, uh, and he's volunteered extensively with River City Wild Ones, Neighbors for Serenity, Kent County Milkweed Planting Days, Michigan Bluebird Society, uh, and other things. He's an avid park supporter and supporter of preserving green space. He would be a fantastic member to the Parks Committee. And then also Mr. Ken Kaiser. He currently serves or professionally as the founder and CEO of Miles Technology, which is a mobile roadside assistance company. Thirty five years ago, he was a business, he had a career in business and finance that started, excuse me, on the Chicago Board of Trade. Um, he worked in a private finance companies, uh, accounting. He's got a good financial background. He is an avid outdoorsman and in his free time, he's he's always at the different Cascade parks, Caledonia parks, different parks throughout Kent County. Um, he is dedicated to serving his community and also to preserving green space throughout town, the township. Uh, on behalf of the entire board, I want to extend my appreciation to the outgoing members, Chair Ginny Wanty and Vice Chair Joe Engel for their commitment and contribution to Cascade up to this point. The Pathways Committee. Reappointment of both Mike Reese, again, he's the liaison to the Parks Committee, and Scott Rizzi, the Planning Commission liaison. As far as the Downtown Development Authority, I'm offering two appointments for the two vacancies. First would be Kristen Carlson and the second would be Chris Bingham. Both are residents of Cascade Township. Ms. Carlson is a longtime Cascade resident and a local business owner, specifically Bridal Elegance, right in the heart of Cascade. Bridal Elegance sits in the same building as the um, old fire, old Cascade Fire Station and Township Hall. She's also a licensed realster, uh, and is a small business owner. I think she'll be valuable because she knows the challenges that local businesses face and also appreciates that her role as a member on the DDA includes advocating for those smaller businesses. She grew up and raised her family in Cascade. Um, she's committed to a people oriented village downtown area that also highlights and preserves Cascade's unique character. She's particularly excited to help make that um, a goal. And the area between Thornapple River Drive and twenty eighth street by Cascade will be getting a lot of attention from the DDA. Mr. Bingham is a senior director of global sales excellence at Miller Knoll. He has over twenty five years of experience in finance, data and also design. He is passionate about community design spaces and he, um, when he lived in Lansing, he served on the Old Town Revitalization Committee. when he lived in Lansing, he served on the Old Town Revitalization Committee. He and his husband love Cascade Township and they are also excited to further the goals of the DDA and the, those of residents that were set out in the strategic plan. I note that there's a lot of renewed interest and it's significant interest from residents and business owners that expressed a desire to serve on the DDA. Um, I think this is a positive response to the upcoming initiatives that the DDA will be considering in the next year, two years. And it also, um, I tried to reflect that in these DDA appointments. Having said that, I want to thank the outgoing chair, Jennifer Puplava and also longtime um, DDA member Dr. Richard Siegel for their long service on the DDA. Twelve years and sixteen years. I know that they will be missed and that we very much appreciate their dedicated service. Zoning Board of Appeals, the reappointment of Mr. Aaron Mead. And lastly, the Township Board Standing Committees. Personnel Finance Committee, Treasurer Corstang, Supervisor Lusbrunz, Trustee Nordhook, Infrastructure, Trustee Shipley, Supervisor Lusbrunz, Trustee McDonald, Public Safety, Trustee Shipley, Trustee Nordhook and Trustee Kessel, and Governors, Clerk Slater, Treasurer Corstang and Supervisor Lusbrunz. Questions, discussion? Comments?
I have some observations here. First of all, uh, fresh outlook and methods is always good. And I've noticed that your recommendations for these appointments and reappointments combine experience like Mr. Reese and Mr. Reese and Mr. Bruno um, with new thoughts and processes. And I don't see anything wrong with what you recommended because they seem to be all within the um, township guidelines and ordinances.
I did forget to mention Planning Commission appointments are not up at this meeting. We expect hopefully in January. In the meantime, the residents serving on those will continue to serve until there's replacement. Sorry about that.
With that, I I move to approve as presented.
Support.
There's nothing left. Sorry, I read my entire memo. Um, that's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Corstang, to approve the twenty twenty four proposed appointments. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Article ten, nothing, article eleven, public comments. Uh, you're welcome to comment on anything uh, that happened tonight or just in general. And Mr. Moxley, thank you for attending personally.
Just have a few simple comments. Ralph Moxley, seventeen fifty seven Hillsboro Avenue. Just wanted to mention, first of all, uh, Phil Skaggs getting the three and a half million dollars for that bridge. This is great. This is so badly needed. Every time I drive over that bridge and see somebody riding their bike the other way or jogging the other way, I think this is a disaster waiting to happen. So I'm so glad you got the funding for that. I had mentioned to the previous planner, Steve, several times, we, we need to do something. This is, this is dangerous. So I'm glad something has happened here. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I was so happy to see that um, federal judge Jane Beckering got the lawsuit, the state lawsuit back in the state of Michigan.
She your neighbor?
Yes, she is.
Not that that matters.
I I just call her Judge Jane.
Uh huh.
Okay? And I'm so glad to see that's back here because the uh, G O Ford Airport needs to be held accountable for what they've done to this township here. And I I'm just really elated about what uh, that her ruling was on that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, I'd be happy to help out on Oriental Bittersweet Removal. Uh, I think I'm fairly good at it. And if you could just mention that to uh, uh, your Parks Director, I'd be happy to help.
Do you want to speak to our volunteer coordinator, she's two rows behind you also right now.
She's got your name, Ralph.
But don't worry, we'll.
Happy to help out because this stuff is spreading, we got to get it under, under control. Uh, and the last thing I want to mention is, uh, many of you turned out from my model railroad open house. I'm happy that you were able to join us. Uh, and those who weren't able to join us, uh, I would welcome you to come over, bring the kids, bring the grandkids, especially around Christmas time. Just give me a call, uh, come on over and I'd be happy to uh, show you around and even let the kids run the trains. Okay, and we did have a great turnout, by the way. Okay?
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner Moxley. Is there anyone virtually?
No public comment.
Article twelve, manager comments?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Um, I guess I'll start out with the first um, comment is to clarify something that was said during the budget process. The evening that the budget was approved by the board, um, I was out with COVID and we had some technical difficulties in this room, so I was speaking through a telephone on a microphone, if you remember correctly. But I did mention um, something about uh, thirty two thousand dollars in unfunded liability. The, just to clarify, what I said was the thirty two thousand dollars was the only additional unfunded liability contribution in the last five years. Not that our unfunded liability was thirty two thousand. Unfunded liability is about five million dollars uh, for our twenty twenty two audit. I did have a conversation with both MERS and looked at our twenty two, twenty twenty two actuarial report from them to make sure that I completely understood the questions that were, uh, that came up at the board level. Uh, we are seventy percent funded in our MERS um, defined benefit plan, which if, I hope everybody remembers, that plan is actually closed to any new members. Um, everybody that's coming into the township is now on a defined contribution plan, which is, which has much less liability, um, actually almost zero liability from the township from a long term standpoint. But the defined benefit plan, which um, is active with our active employees and and those that are drawing on it, it's a longer um, is being contributed to and is not offered to anybody else. So I just wanted to clarify that I did send an email to the board today, but I know for anyone that's out there in the public that may have questions or may have, um, may understand municipal finance and understand unfunded liabilities. Um, if I misspoke, um, that was not the intent, so I just wanted to make sure that, uh, I put that out there. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well. A couple of other things. Um, I want to publicly thank Max Benedict for bringing um, the memorial pathway to the township. Um, it's been a pleasure working with him and I want to publicly um, tell him and the family our sincere condolences. Um, but we're excited that we can memorialize Alan in that way. Thank you to the board for passing the fourth quarter budget amendments. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, so be safe.
Or comments?
Oh, I have one more quick thing, sorry. If anybody in the township is, has experience in municipal government, we are looking for a finance director and a community planner. So if you have anybody in your networks that's looking for employment, that would like to come work for Cascade Township with myself and Jennifer and these seven fine people, I would welcome them to apply for a position.
Get all the.
Now I'm, now I'm done.
For comments?
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead.
No, John.
I might be wordy.
I I I'm going to be a little bit wordy, too. I just wanted to say, um, I I just love Christmas. I've loved Christmas my whole life since I was born, so sixty eight years, I love Christmas. And I would wish we had a white Christmas, snow, but we, but we probably won't. So I know a lot of people don't want snow, but I would, I would love it. So I just want to say, uh, thank you to the board and ladies first, do you like cherries or blue?
Blueberries.
Blueberries. Well, I have this great customer that I just really like to support called Cousy. So I have some Cousy blueberries. Baby, like cherries or blueberries?
Surprise me, they're delicious. Thank you so much. Thank you, Tom. Blueberries. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Well, all right, well. Do you have a preference?
Cherry.
Cherry. Cherry should be, yeah. John, I don't know, I think we're breaking down.
Surprise me.
Blueberries.
Thanks, Tom.
Uh, cherry to blueberries?
Either one, it's fine.
All right, you're blueberry. Timmy, you get your big choice, cherry to blueberry.
Can't go wrong.
Can't go wrong? You're right.
Maybe it's already halfway through.
All right.
Permanently.
Thank you. So I say Merry Christmas and thank you, everybody.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
I I I appreciate the board and you guys have done a wonderful job and Cascade is the best place you can be in the state of Michigan.
Before John gets wordy, I'll, I'll say Happy New Year, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody that came tonight and to the whole board. I hope you have a very happy holiday season and look forward to twenty twenty four. That's all.
As always, I stand up and thank you guys for coming and anybody that's listening out on Zoom. Uh, as we close out this year with board actions, there's many things left to be done. Uh, Mr. Carey has brought up that we need to address Jake Breaking in the township. So that's still alive and well. And did anybody go across Burton Street recently?
Yeah, yep, this morning.
The bridge is open. I found that out by surprise. And if you've noticed, there's been a reduction of traffic that had to take that detour down onto Twenty Eighth Street, so hopefully we get a little relief from traffic due to that bridge being open. Uh, let me see. I guess that's all I have, other than thanks for being our residents and thanks for letting us do your bidding. That's all I have.
Thanks for some regulars in the audience, we really appreciate it, it's nice to see you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, thank you. Your motion?
Merry Christmas, enjoy your peppermint bur.
Yes, thank you, Sue.
Where that came from, thanks for clarifying.
They're great.
Still alive, so we're good. Make a motion to adjourn.